Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, November 19th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have y'all guests in attendance today. Welcome.
Good morning, sir.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Bobby Mitchell. She is going to lead us in our invocation. Our pledges will be led by Chase Matthews. He's the grandson of Jeff May, and he's enlisted in-- which branch is he going to be in?
It's in the U.S. Air Force.
In the Air Force. He's about to ship out, so we wish him-- we thank him in advance for his service to the country and wish him all the best. So we'll please stand, and I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Good morning. Gracious Father, Lord, we come before you today with humble hearts by the response-- for the responsibility that you placed upon us, Lord. We come before you today, giving you all the glory and all the honor and all the praises. Lord, we come before you, lifting you up and magnifying your name, because there is none like you, Lord. Lord, we give you glory, honor, praises, Lord. You are worthy to be praised, Lord. As we go into this Thanksgiving season, this holiday season, Lord, we ask if you to touch our hearts, Lord. Remind us, Lord, of who you are and whose we are, Lord. We thank you for being so good and so kind and so merciful, Lord. Lord, we ask for your wisdom, Lord, this morning. Guide our discussion, Lord. Guide our decisions, Lord, that we may make decisions, Lord, that are pleasing in your eyesight, Lord. Lord, we know you to be a burden bearer. Somebody is sick in their body this morning. Somebody don't have enough money for Thanksgiving food, Lord. Lord, let us all share, Lord. Lord, we ask if you enlarge our resources today, in the name of Jesus, Lord. Thank you for being a promise keeper, Lord. You said in your word that you'd never leave us nor forsake us, Lord. Lord, we're leaning and depending on you, Lord, thanking you for all that you do, thanking you for making ways when we don't see no way, opening doors that have been closing our face, closing doors, Lord Jesus, that need to be closed. Thank you for being good, wise, and merciful, Lord. Lord, we lift you up, fill our cup this morning. Lord, we know you to be a doctor in the sick room, lawyer in the courtroom, Lord. Lord, you a decision maker, Lord, in this Commissioner's Court, Lord Jesus. We ask if you touch everybody that's here, Lord. Help them and their family, Lord. We know you love us, Lord, because you bestowed all these blessings upon us, Lord. But there are still hurting people, Lord, during this season, Lord. We ask if you stretch us, Lord, and let us do your will. Not my will, but let your will be done, Lord. Go in homes right now, Lord Jesus. Go in the prison walls, Lord Jesus. Go everywhere, all over this earth, Lord, touching healing and delivering, Lord. There was a time we need healing, Lord. That time is now, Lord. Lord, you water in dry places, Lord. Food in starving lands, Lord. We ask if you be all over the place, Lord. Help, Lord Jesus, help your people, Lord. People are crying out to you, Lord. You said, Lord, your people are crying out, and you're hearing their voices right now, Lord. Lord, we'll heal our-- fill our cups, Lord. Lord, heal our land, Lord. Somebody, Lord Jesus, don't know you in the part of the earth seeing, Lord. We ask if you make yourself known to them, Lord. Help these people, Lord. Help your people, Lord. When things get too rough for us, Lord, we can always lean and depending on you, Lord. Lord, you are leaning post, Lord. You are burden bearer. You are heavy load sharer. Lord, we thank you, and we give you all the glory, all the honor and the praises, Lord, because you are so worthy to be praised. We just lift you up and magnify your name, Lord, because you can do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask to thank, Lord, in the name of Jesus. Right now, Lord, I ask if you touch each and every one of these Commissioners, Lord. The county judge, Lord, remind them, Lord, that they serve you, Lord, not themselves, Lord. Let us do your will, Lord, and not our will, Lord. Touch our audience, our citizen today, Lord Jesus. If they're torn down, build them up where they're torn down, Lord. Stretching them where they're weak, Lord. There was a time we need you, Lord. We need you right now, Lord. Trouble on every side, Lord. You know what we need and how we need it, Lord. Have mercy today, Lord. Lord, fill our cups today, Lord Jesus. Those that are hungry, Lord, let them be fed, Lord. Those that are sick, Lord, let them be healed, Lord. Those that are having a financial problem, Lord, let them have something for themselves, Lord. Those that are in trouble, Lord, send help, Lord. Send help to them, Lord, in the name of Jesus. I ask if you bless this court, bless this county, bless this nation, Lord. Touch each and every person, Lord. You know what they need and how we need it, Lord. Have mercy on us, Lord, this morning. In Jesus's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
All right, then Chase, where's Chase at?
Please join me for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Diane, can you sign these real quick?
Yes, I would.
Please, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, and thank you, Chase. Don't be a stranger. Come back and see us.
Yeah.
I'd like to go to item one, which is for public input for items not listed on the agenda, and we have one registered speaker today, and it's Mr. Charles Lee. Mr. Lee, if you'll come forward. I would remind our speakers today that we do have a three-minute time limit.
How is everybody doing this morning?
Good, sir.
My name is Charles Lee. Yes, and I first want to thank Commissioner Ryan Williams on his reelection, Sheriff Tracy Murphy, and Donald Trump on his reelection to President of the United States of America. With that being said, I just want to say now that elections have consequences, and I'm saying that I'm not-- and I know that very full and well, because everybody knows me. I'm always riding around town with signs in my van stating my opinion, because I know how serious the issues are today. That being said, now I've come full circle now, because this is really what really got me into politics in the first place, because I was doing the same thing I'm doing here that I was doing in New Jersey, going around the different Commissioners' Courts, trying to get them to their role, their Sheriff's Department in the 287-G program, because now it's-- now we're to the point now, it's either now or never. If we don't get these people out now, it's never going to happen, and it's not going to happen without interior enforcement. If we leave it up to the federal government, it's never going to happen. I want you guys to certify every sheriff in the Sheriff's Department and the Constable's Court in the 287-G program so we can start enforcing federal immigration law at the local level, because that's the only way it's going to get done, and I want you guys to pay for it, and that's what I'm saying. Because I've already spoke to my-- because I live in Denton. The communists on the Commissioners' Court, they've already said they're not going to do it. They're going to obstruct the Trump's administration at all costs, and I'm saying right now, I'm willing to assist in deporting illegal aliens out of this, whatever needs to get done, and I don't care how much it costs, and that's exactly what I want you guys to do, and that's pretty much all I have to say. And I'm currently trying to recall a communist off the Denton City Council called Brandon McGee, and I have a recall petition right now if anybody's interested in signing. Thank you so much, and if you live in Denton, thank you and have a nice day.
Mr. Lee, may I point out that Commissioner Mitchell was also reelected?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't know that. I'm not in your district, so I wasn't really versed that you-- but congratulations. Yes, I do congratulate you, too. I'm not directly in your district, so I didn't know you were up on the ballot.
Thank you.
So, but you have-- yes, yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let me turn that on. What's that? Thank you, Teresa. We have one more registered speaker, Mr. Andy Hopper. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me this morning. I'm Andy Hopper. I'm the representative-elect for House District 64, which is the district we're in. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I will be representing Wise and Denton Counties. It's interesting, if you look at the history, I did some research last night. I think the last time that these two counties were together from a stretch from 1893 to 1913, which is pretty cool. So really, half of our marriage, we actually lived right here in the city of Denton. I feel very strongly about the fact that we need to stand together as conservatives to stand up for the city and some folks that don't have the best interest of the city at heart, and one of my things that I want to do is to make sure that our conservative principles are advanced across this district, and I'm really looking forward to working with all of you to make sure that we fight for the state and fight for this country. So thank you all very much. I just want you to know that my door is open, and I'm also on the prowl for a space over here in Denton County. So if any of y'all know a space, I'd really appreciate you, and reach out anytime. Thank you all very much. I'm looking forward to representing each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Hearing no other items under item one, we'll proceed forward. Let's go to-- we've got several guests with us today. We want to work through our agenda and get everybody out of here in a timely manner, but first we're going to start with one of our retirees with Mr. Gary Rector. Gary, where are you? Hello. Good morning, sir. If you'll come forward. Congratulations. We have-- we'll read this. I want to thank you in advance for your years of service to the county, so I'll read this resolution. We'll have some comments from the court members, and then we promise to give you the last words. Does that sound good?
No, thank you, Judge.
All right, here we go. This is item 3A, approval of a resolution recognizing Gary Rector's retirement. This is a resolution honoring Gary Rector for eight years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the 19th day of November 2024, considered a fine resolution. Whereas Gary Rector has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Sheriff's Office since September the 28th, 2016, and will retire on November the 30th, 2024, with over eight years of service. Whereas Gary Rector was hired as a detention officer and over the years worked in nearly every section of the jail during his eight years of service, Gary's hard work and dedication allowed him to advance quickly. On August the 14th, 2019, he was promoted to detention corporal. He then became a detention sergeant on February the 2nd, 2022, where he finished his career. And where Sergeant Rector's supervisor states that he has been an asset to Denton County Sheriff's Office, he does an outstanding job de-escalating possible use of force situations by talking and listening to the inmate's concerns, and Sergeant Rector is a reliable, hard-working individual who is easy to work with and respected by his coworkers and supervisors. We wish him well in his retirement. Sergeant Rector will be missed. And whereas Gary intends to enjoy his retirement by spending more time with his children and four grandchildren, he plans-- he also plans to tour various parts of our country on his Harley Davidson, volunteer and travel to-- well, there goes my three-minute timer.
[laughter]
They pulled the-- gave me the hook. Good news, I have the control of the timer. That's always nice. Let me read this one again. Back to the Harley Davidson. He also plans to tour various parts of the country on his Harley Davidson, volunteer and travel to other countries. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Gary Rector our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton. Congratulate Gary and as well in retirement. Extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in years to come, done in open court. This the 19th day of November 2024, upon a motion made by--
Moved to approve.
--motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Well, Gary, I do know that we have the sheriff here. Sheriff Murphy, would you like to come say anything?
Yes, I would, Judge. It's hard to lose good people when this gentleman standing before you today could have just been a DO and carried on and did a great job as a DO and just continued that until he reached this day, but he chose not to do that. He chose to seek out promotional advances and promoted to corporal and then promoted to sergeant, and when you have a whole lot of 18, 19, 20, 20 kids working in the jail, to have a man that works as a mentor more than a boss, who has life experiences and can show these kids the right way to do things, and Gary has done that for as long-- he's been here as long as I've been here, and he has just done a tremendous job at every level that we've had him at, and especially at sergeant, because like I said, that's a hard job when you're trying to herd cats on a daily basis, and he was successful at that. He's been a valuable member of our team. He's a guy that you depend on, that you know you don't have to worry about his section, you don't have to worry about what's going on, because Gary's going to take care of it, and we're going to miss him a lot at the Sheriff's Office, and I appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate you.
Well, I think the sheriff said it very well. I do want to thank you for answering the call to public service here at the county, and I know that the-- working in the jail is not always the easiest toward duty, right?
Right.
But I appreciate you handling that in a professional way and seeking promotion as the sheriff's have been a mentor to us. I think that is truly noble, and I appreciate you. I wish you all the best. Be careful on the Harley Davidson. Anyone else want to add any comments?
Yeah, Judge, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I really appreciate all the years, and we obviously hate to lose you. It's such an important role, even though a lot of people don't see it, understand it, or hear of it, but it is a very important role for the Sheriff's Department, but I do want to wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else? All right, well, we are going to give you the last word, sir, so anything you would like to say or any guests you'd like to introduce?
I just want to say it's been an honor working for the folks of Denton County. Everybody that I've come in contact with has been great, great. I came from Lubbock originally, and Denton is another great place to be from. I'd like to introduce my two children, Judge Lori Ragland and Jonathan Rector. They're here with me today to celebrate this retirement, and again, just thank you for the honor.
All right, very good, very good. Hearing no other comments. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. So thank you, sir.
[applause]
Good time to hear Zach.
[laughter]
[laughter]
Sheriff, if you want to join us, please.
[inaudible]
I'm going to get the social services out of here.
Okay.
Then we can do it.
Yeah.
Well, they're doing-- they're working anyway.
Yeah, they're working today anyway.
All right. Next, let's go to 3B, approval of a proclamation recognizing November the 20th, 2024 as GIS Day and any appropriate action. And I know we have our GIS department here. Would you all like to come forward? And I think they have a quick slide here. Allison, do you want to go ahead?
Okay.
We're glad to have you all here today.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Good morning, Judge Eads and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the information about GIS Day and share GIS Day's impact on Denton County. I would also like to take the opportunity to recognize the dedicated geospatial professionals behind me who comprise the Denton County GIS team. The members of the GIS team know the full potential of geospatial technology, and they know how to harness the power of cutting-edge geographic information systems to transform spatial data into detailed maps, visualizations that impact and empower decision-making throughout Denton County to serve Denton County residents better. Numerous departments use geospatial technology, such as the Emergency Response Management for visualizing real-time emergencies, evacuation routes, and critical infrastructure locations. The Infrastructure Management and Transportation Department for mapping existing roads, utilities, and bridges with overlays showing maintenance needs and repair priorities. The Public Health Department uses GIS to monitor disease outbreaks, demographics, and impacts on the environment.
[inaudible]
All right. Next, let's go to 3B, approval of a proclamation recognizing November the 20th, 2024 as GIS Day and any appropriate action. And how do we have our GIS department here? Would you all like to come forward? And I think they have a quick slide here. Allison, do you want to go ahead? We're glad to have you all here today.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Good morning, Judge Eads and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present the information about GIS Day and share GIS Day's impact on Denton County. I would also like to take the opportunity to recognize the dedicated geospatial professionals behind me who comprise the Denton County GIS team. The members of the GIS team know the full potential of geospatial technology and they know how to harness the power of cutting-edge geographic information systems to transform spatial data into detailed maps, visualizations that impact and empower decision-making throughout Denton County to serve Denton County residents better. Numerous departments use geospatial technology such as the Emergency Response Management for visualizing real-time emergencies, evacuation routes, and critical infrastructure locations. The Infrastructure Management and Transportation Department for mapping existing roads, utilities, and bridges with overlays showing maintenance needs and repair priorities. The Public Health Department uses GIS to monitor disease outbreaks, demographics, and impacts on the environment. The GIS team works with the public regularly for map requests and to provide an open data download hub as well as an application known as Landmark that provides a one-stop shop for the public and their data needs. For these reasons and more, thank you again for your support of GIS and GIS Day 2024 and the opportunity to provide recognition to the work that the GIS team, team does daily for the benefit of Denton County and to raise awareness of GIS technology and the increasing potential to continually streamline processes, enhance efficiency, and elevate operations across the county. And besides all of that, who doesn't love a map? And with that said, we bring you, Judge, the proclamation for Denton County GIS Day.
Okay, perfect. Good. Thank you. So with a proclamation for GIS Day, whereas Denton County recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare and general public throughout Denton County. And whereas geographic information systems, also known as GIS technology, allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential and acknowledge those who have chosen GIS as their profession to improve the lives of our citizens. And whereas Denton County is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making, better serve its residents, and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. And whereas November 20th, 2024 marks the 25th anniversary of GIS Day, a day dedicated to showing, teaching, inspiring others to use GIS. The theme this year is Mapping Minds, Shaping the World. 25 years of GIS excellence encapsulating the profound impact of geographic information systems and revolution how we perceive, navigate, and shape our planet. It symbolizes the fusion of human ingenuity and technological innovation, empowering us to forge a brighter future through spatial insights and informed decision-making. Now therefore, it be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim that Denton County is officially supporting and will celebrate GIS Day on November the 20th, 2024. Done in open court. This the 19th day of November 2024 upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, I want to thank y'all and I will just tell you, thank you for choosing this as a profession, as the resolution says. But when I go out and give speeches all the time, I get, I, I talk about y'all's program and landmark and how you can get on there and look everything up. And it's amazing, the people that start nodding their heads because they're big fans of what you do. So I, I want to just tell you that on behalf of the public. When I, and I know all the court members probably share those same sentiments. We go out and talk to people and we always get rave reviews about y'all's maps and the creativity and all the different layers you can add to it. And it just really helps people who are planning to relocate here, expand a business here, or look for floodplains and just all the different things, property lines and so forth, where the utilities are. It's just really, it's important work. It's noble work and I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Well, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Say thank you so much. We'll do the small business one later. There's no one in attendance for that one. So let's go to, I want to do. Let's go to 13A, approval of the canvas of the November 5th, 2024, general election and appropriate action. We have our wonderful elections administrator, Frank Phillips, with us today. I want to just give Frank and his whole team a big hand for all that they've done. Wow, you made us, Frank, you made us. And I hope your office is watching. Y'all made us proud again. And y'all handled everything leading up to the election in an informative, educational, very thoughtful, detailed way. And, and there's a lot of details that go involved in, in executing an election well. And y'all, y'all did such a great job and improved your training and got lots of comments on that. So just really wanted to thank y'all for executing that so well. Lots of, lots of, lots of compliments.
Well, thank you. You know, I do have the best app in the state of Texas, no doubt. I also want to thank a couple of other departments that we couldn't do this without. Kevin and his team, Technology Services, Facilities, also the sheriff, fire marshal, Constable Two and Constable Six. They provided a lot of security for us this time and we were very fortunate to have them there. So you have before you the, what are right now, the unofficial numbers of the 2024 general election. Once you approve these numbers, they'll become official. And then later today, I'll report these numbers to the Secretary of State's office.
Frank, I want to congratulate you on not still counting ballots like some counties in Pennsylvania are doing today. Thank you for getting the job done correctly in a timely fashion.
Frank, are you going to, are you going to read these? We've done before? Are we just going to adopt it as an agenda item?
I would just adopt it.
Okay. All right. Our chair will move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So all right, good. Thank you. I thought you were going to have to read all these like a long agenda. We've done that over the years.
I've got a 600 page. If we want to read it, I can get started.
I was geared up.
It's okay.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion. All right. We really do have a great department over there. Next, let's go to 14A, approval of the 2024-2025 Social Services Agreements between Denton County, Texas, and one, the Denton County Friends of the Family, and number two, PD Place, and Three Span Incorporated. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Do we have representatives of the different entities here? Which, let's go ahead and have them come up. Tony, if you want to come up and talk about the Friends of the Family briefly, let's do a little one minute. And then anyone from PD Place and Span, if individuals are watching, would like for the, for the public, anyone's watching to see what we're, what our partnerships are about.
Thank you for your ongoing support. We greatly appreciate it. Denton County Friends of the Family is the sole provider of services, free services, and shelter, counseling, legal services for victims of domestic violence. We have been in Denton County since 1980, so proud to be here. And last year served 5,712 individuals with various needs, anything from emergency shelter to food to housing to transitional housing to legal services to court accompaniment, hospital response, and all of the various things that they're, that they're hard to needs desire. So we are grateful for the ongoing support of Denton County Commissioners Court. Continue to help us to meet the needs of Denton County citizens.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, Tony. If you'll stand right here, we're going to do a little check presentation in just a second for everybody. So don't run off. Okay, PD Place, just go right ahead. Good to see you.
Judge, members of the court, thank you very much for your ongoing support of the services that PD Place provides to children who live throughout North Texas. PD Place is the primary, primary care provider of medical services for 6,000 children who live throughout North Texas who would otherwise not have access to primary pediatric health care. We are extraordinarily grateful for the county, for your partnership. And one of the key elements that, that this partnership has enabled us to do in the last, in the last year is that in addition to providing the traditional care for preventive care and care for when children are sick, is the expansion of our mental health services. We added a second licensed professional counselor this summer and have fully incorporated mental health services into how PD Place defines primary care, which is certainly a benefit to our patients and all of those who they encounter throughout the county. Thank you so much for your support. We're most grateful.
Thank you so much. All right. Michelle, is Michelle here? There's Michelle. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Judge Eads. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much. I'm Michelle. I'm the executive director of Span Meals on Wheels of Denton County. We are so honored and privileged to serve the seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities throughout Denton County. And 2024 marks our 50th year in Denton County. So we're very, very appreciative that we can continue to serve. And we couldn't do it without your support. Thank you so much for all you do. And we hope to be here not only another 50 years, but as long as the community needs us. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. We already voted. So let's go ahead. We'll, we'll come down here. We'll take some pictures real quick. Members, let's go to item 4A, which is a public hearing on November the 19th, 2024 for approval of the replat of the Ponderosa Ranch lots 3R and 4R, Block A. This is 118.870 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 4. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
I make the motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Ponderosa Ranch replat? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Ponderosa Ranch replat? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now do we have a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
We have a motion for approval of the replat by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go, we have other guests with us today and I want to be sure to respect their time as well. Let's go to, let's go to item, let's go to 14. Let's go to item 14H. We'll start at 14H. This is approval of a resolution by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting the petition, seeking the dissolution of Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct One, and calling for a public hearing to be held in Commissioners Court on December the 10th, 2024, meeting in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to 14I, opening and holding a public hearing related to the creation of the Public Meadows, Public Improvement District and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration of a resolution by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizing the creation of Green Meadows Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct One, in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code. This is calling for a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Green Meadows Public Improvement District? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the Green Meadows Public Improvement District? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for to close the public hearing? We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, to approve the creation of Green Meadows Public Improvement District by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is, you bet, next is 14J, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within improvement area number one of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan in improvement area number one, assessment role for the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in improvement area number one of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District and levying assessments with, against property within improvement area number one of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Number Four. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attending, pardon me, in attendance wishing to speak in favor or opposed to the levy of assessments of the property? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? The motion to close by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14K, consideration and approval of an order by the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of the Denton, the sale of the Denton County, Texas Senior Lean Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series 2024A, Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District Improvement Area Number One Project, and the Denton County, Texas Junior Lean Senior Assessment Revenue Bond Series 2024B, Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District Area Number One Project, to pay for a portion of the costs of improvements benefiting property within improvement area number one of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four, and approving and authorizing related agreements.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Pardon me. Next is 14L, opening and holding a public hearing related to the levy of assessments on property within major improvement area of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District and following the conclusion of the hearing, consideration approval of an order of the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and major improvement area assessment role for the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement plan, a major improvement area assessment role for the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in the major improvement area of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District, and levying assessments against property within the major improvement area of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four, and establishing a lien on such property. So do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
I move to open a public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the major improvement area of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14M, consideration approval of an order of the Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, authorizes the issuance and sale of the Denton County, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2024, Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District, Major Improvement Area Project, to pay for a portion of the costs of improvements benefiting property within a major improvement area of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct Four, and approving and authorizing related agreements.
I move approval, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, I'd like to welcome Tabor Ranch. Uh, it's a great new development going in, and also agreed, I believe, to become a part of our fire protection plan, so.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, we do welcome you, and thank you for, for your development, and thank you for growing Denton County. We appreciate you. And I do echo the Commissioner's comments. Thank you for your support of our fire protection plan. I think that's, that is, uh, very important to the county, and I appreciate you're going to be a significant player in that, so thank you for your leadership and partnership. All right. Very good. I think we got those taking care of, we got the Green Meadows taking care of them. Right. I'm trying to get all people, our guests in attendance out of, through the meeting. Okay, we'll go back and, let's go, we'll go ahead and let, thank y'all for being here. The bond attorneys.
Judge, judge, do you want to do eight now to get them up here as well? Presentation.
Oh, yes.
You want to go ahead and do that? Absolutely. I can barely hear out of this ear today.
No worries.
But I wish I would. That would mean I have to relax. That doesn't happen. Next, let's go to item 8B. This is a presentation from Angela Bailey and Dwight Brown, Vice Presidents of Compensation Consulting of Salary.com regarding the compensation study. Any appropriate action? I'd like to welcome our guests forth. Good morning, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Judge, and commissioners for having us. We look forward to being able to give you a description of the compensation study, uh, that will be undertaken, and congratulations on reelections too, also. Maybe, there you go. There we go. Okay, thank you. So again, my name is Dwight Brown, and I'm here with my colleague Angela Bailey. Uh, we are vice presidents with a company called Salary.com. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about Salary.com, and then talk a little bit about the consulting team that we have working on this particular project, and then more importantly, give you a little bit of the project overview, and then entertain any questions that you might have. The Salary.com has been in business for about 25 years. At our heart, we're really a, a data company. Uh, we do end-to-end compensation management with a consulting arm, also do administration of salary surveys, compensation surveys, and aggregation of results, and as the backbone, we have, uh, our own end-to-end software, excuse me, software that goes with this. We do have extensive experience working with governments and look forward to being able to bring this experience to this particular project. So we have, uh, our project team, as I introduced Angie and myself, and we also have a consulting services manager, Abe Hayes, who is accountable for the project management and the management of the product, project delivery. We also have Dehavelin Barnes, who is a compensation consultant. She's responsible for the project plan and the workflow process, as well as the client deliverables that go with this. Justine Bennett is an associate compensation consultant, and she's responsible for the data compilation and analytics, including statistical modeling. Let's talk a little bit about the project itself. There are really five main facets that go with this. The first facet being the classification study, and if you think of that in terms of being a comprehensive analysis using job questionnaires to understand every job within Denton County, and then we take that and, uh, apply that to the classification system and come up with a, a system that really fits the, uh, the needs of the county. Second facet of this is the compensation study itself. So we take the classifications, which also have leveling, we match jobs to survey jobs within the broader market, and those can be either survey jobs that are close to Denton County, or it could be national. It just depends on the job itself, but we scope according to what the, what the different jobs are. Using that market data, we, uh, we take a look at the salary structures that Denton has, and we apply the market data and the leveling to the salary structures themselves to come up with an overall compensation struc- structure that's either going to be changed from what's currently available, or there could be new facets that go with it. The employee performance and management analysis follows that. Um, we will look at the performance management system here in the county, uh, and then utilizing best practices from the market, will recommend any changes to, uh, to the system and the processes that go with that. Finally, the, I'm sorry, not finally, but the next one is the Salary Administration Guideline Analysis. So we'll look at the Salary Administration Guidelines, do an analysis of, of, uh, what Denton currently has, and recommend any changes based on our findings from the classification system or from best practices that, that we utilize. And then finally, we'll wrap it together and do a leadership workshop or a series of workshops. The goal of that is to essentially train the leaders within Denton County to help employees understand the overall compensation program and the processes that go with that. In terms of timeline, uh, you can see that the timeline here goes from October of '24, so obviously we have, we've already started the project itself, um, working together with the, the internal Denton County team. Uh, they've been very responsive to us, and we appreciate all of the information that they keep providing us to help us understand and go forward. And you will see that the ultimate project end date is October of 2025, so an overall one-year timeframe. Important to know that so that we can hit things efficiently and in a quality way, there will be overlap of the steps. It's not completely linear, um, and that, that helps us make sure that we get this done within, within a reasonable period of time. Finally, the project milestones, um, you know, going from having all data collection complete, there's a lot of data collection that goes into this, both in terms of current data from the county, as well as pulling in the market data. The next will be the classification study report. Fine, our next is internal job matches, so this is the step where we take your jobs, match those jobs to the market, have all that, that data that we can then review, then apply that to the salary structures, and review and approve the salary structures. Next, looking at the performance management, like I talked about, update, updating any of the Salary Administration Guidelines and having the leadership and staff workshops completed. We want to thank the Denton County team internally because they have been very responsive, and uh, their response and their knowledge is going to definitely contribute to the success of this project and really drive the success of the project. With that, anything further that you wanted to add?
I have a question.
Yes.
This was a very interesting presentation. Can you get a digital copy of that to each of us that we might have to refer back to? Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you a digital copy.
Yeah.
Judge, if you don't mind if I say something. Uh, thank you for being here today. Obviously, this is a quick overview. We wanted to make sure we were respectful of everybody's time, so I didn't ask for some long, in-depth overview, but obviously, any questions you have, please reach out, or you can ask now, obviously, as well. And I want to thank the HR department, and Crystal's kind of been the one that has to take the lead on this, um, and so far, it's, it's been very smooth. The, the, the most important thing, I think I relayed to them, one of the most important things is communication and making sure we all understand where we are and what's going on. So we're going to do a couple of these where they'll come in here and kind of give us some updates, but obviously, at any point in time, if anybody has any questions, we'll, we'll get those answered for you, so I do really appreciate you guys being here today.
Which departments are y'all doing? Because I remember when we talked about this, this was not countywide, this was some department. So which ones are we focusing on?
Correct. We're, we are currently starting with purchasing, HR, information technology, treasury, and then we'll be looking at the administrative jobs as well as the clerk jobs, and then make a determination based on the data, where do we go? How much further do we broaden it?
Could you repeat, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Purchasing, HR?
Oh, I'm sorry. Purchasing, HR, information technology, treasury, and then administrative jobs and clerk jobs.
Clerk jobs.
Clerk.
Clerk, clerk jobs.
The clerk job.
Judge, and commissioners, what he's referring to the clerks is the JP's, constables.
The JP's and constables.
County clerk, district clerk, and tax office.
Okay.
Originally, those weren't the ones we were going to look at first, but obviously, with the, the asks, that, that was added to it.
Right.
Now, is this all clerks or just the JP, constable clerks?
It's a clerk posi-, I would think it's a clerk.
It's a clerk position, but we are looking at them individually, if you will. This is not, what we're trying to, my opinion is, what we're trying to get away from is having, uh, 500 people fall under the same category when sometimes those jobs are not exactly the same. And that's what we're trying to, to walk through to make sure that if they are exactly the same, that's fine, but we all know that's not exactly the truth. There's, there's different, uh, expectations of different jobs, uh, different ones, so, so they're obviously going to put that together, and then we'll all make the decision of how we want to do it going forward.
I just want to make sure that when we started down this path, that it was a, it was not every, it was not the whole county. It was to see if this, if we like this, if we, how, how does this work? Um, how does this relationship with y'all work before we take any of the next steps? That's what we, we began it, that's what we agreed to do.
Right.
Now, welcome y'all, welcome to work here. Fundamentally, I believe the HR department should be doing this, though, and I've said it before, and I believe this is a function of HR, and they should be the ones to keep this current, and, and they, they know our departments and our market better than anyone. I, I firmly believe that, and the nuances of, of institutional knowledge and know where, where we're losing people to and where we're getting people from, and so I do believe that this, this is me, I have great confidence in them, and that they, this would be something that they should fundamentally be doing in, in-house. But I'm eager to see what y'all's work product is.
And I wouldn't suggest.
And that's not a surprise. I mean, I've, I've said that before, but I believe this is something.
And I wouldn't suggest that's 100% incorrect. It isn't unusual. This happens in a lot of counties, do the exact same thing we're doing, at least to get ourselves back to square one, and then obviously, we, you know, we revisit these kind of things most, do it every, every seven years, but once you get it figured out, and there's some areas we really did need some help, uh, that we were all, because I sat down and tried to figure this out with HR, and there's some areas that we're struggling with, and, um, and I don't think that's a, a knock to HR, it's just sometimes you need consultants to come in and help you figure it out, and that's what we're going to do. And then going forward, I think we're going to have a lot smoother operation, uh, and so obviously, we want to get to that goal.
I appreciate your advocacy for it, Commissioner, and I, I'm just about, it's not, that it needs to be done, and I agree with you, it's about, who does it?
Yes, sir.
So that's why, but I appreciate y'all's efforts and diligence. Thank y'all for being here. Any other questions or comments?
Do you mind, do you mind flipping back to the time, the timeline, like, because I need.
Just another copy, I get, I'm out.
Well, I just, yeah.
Pardon me.
That's, that's, that is not, if, if you want to, uh, let them know, this is not for the first part.
I was going to say, that, that was in the gap, that, that's what I'm not catching on that.
Right, this is not just for the first part, this would be to complete the, the whole county.
And if we could get some basic timeline on that, that would be helpful to me.
Okay, yeah, we'll get something put together and make sure we get it over to you guys.
Perfect.
Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Make sure I was at the same meeting you guys were in.
All right, perfect. Thank you, I'm eager to see the, I'm eager to see the results.
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Judge.
You bet, absolutely. I know y'all put a lot of time in on that, and I appreciate it. Is there anything? I'm trying to look for any other guests here. Try to handle them appropriately. All right, let's go to, okay, I'm trying, yes, ma'am. Let's go to item two, which are our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda or do a motion for approval as presented?
They're moved.
Move a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Our consent agenda, they consist of item 2A, approve the order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2B is approval of payroll. Next, let's go to item 3C, which is approval of proclamation recognizing November the 30th, 2024 is the 15th Annual Small Business Saturday, and any appropriate action. This is always fun. And this is, whereas, this is a proclamation recognizing November 30th, 2024 is the 15th Annual Small Business Saturday, and this is whereas Denton County celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community, whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms and with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. There were 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and bus, local businesses purchasing local goods and services. Whereas in 2023, 59% of US customer, of US consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped and/or dined at a small independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday. Whereas Denton County supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, preserve our communities, and whereas local advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim Saturday, November the 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. Done in open court, this is the 19th day of November, 2024, upon a motion by the Chair.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? While I'm excited of all our small businesses here in the county, we work so often with the large ones, it's also important, we're mindful of our small businesses as well, and try to shop, shop local, everybody. We've got to keep our retailers going and our local restaurants. Any other comments?
Back in one of America.
It is, it totally is. All of, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 5A, approve the bill report payments from CSDD Community Corrections. TAIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Fortress, VIT Interest, and D, Fortress Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval? Do you have a motion for approval as presented?
Yeah.
You heard it.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's a thing. Five B is discussion approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-four monthly financial report from August, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Judge. Um, I just wanted to point out that the, um, as before, uh, we do have excess revenues for taxes. Just in the general fund alone, I think we're going to finish over fifteen million dollars above estimates. And that's the issues that we've discussed before. So, um, and we've taken it, uh, measures in the twenty twenty-five budget to kind of chip in the way of those deferrals, as we've discussed. And also, uh, investment revenues, which we have the investment report next. But, uh, investment revenues have been coming in, um, in record amounts. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next item. But those are the, um, also, I wanted to mention our budget is also coming in, uh, I think even a little better than I expected. So, um, so it's all looking good right now. I think our reserves are going to finish, uh, finish up significantly higher, uh, again this year.
That's awesome. Music to our ears. Thank you, sir. All right, do we have a motion for approval?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is five C, discussion approval of Denton County Quarterly Investment Report, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
And, um, this, uh, I just wanted to point out here, we've, uh, finished, uh, the year with investment revenues before our year-end adjustments. Uh, forty-four point seven million dollars. There was, just a few years ago, uh, I think twenty twenty or twenty-one, we had, um, it was just over a million dollars. So, you know, this is a significant change. So now, uh, keep in mind, a lot of this, uh, the reason for the excessive, or not excessive, but, or, uh, higher amounts are because, uh, of course, interest rates are higher. But also, uh, we had a lot more money to invest too. So, uh, because of our ARPA funds and, and back in the day, our CARES money. But, um, and we also have sold bonds and we're earning money on the capital projects, uh, money, or the, the bond funds. So, um, but we have, uh, been looking, I've been working with Cindy and, and, uh, discussing investment option, you know, because we've had to change our strategies. Now, uh, the Federal Reserve, uh, over the last quarter, low, uh, began lowering rates, and they've gone down seventy-five basis points. So, um, so I don't know, I don't expect the rates to stay where they are. But I do expect them to kind of go down slowly. But, you know, I don't have a crystal ball.
Right.
Um, but, uh, so I don't think our investment earnings, as high as they are, are going to last a whole lot longer. So we need to keep that in mind as we budget. So, uh, but that's all I have for today. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
I do have a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then let's go to five D, approval resolution to participate in the twenty twenty-five State Energy Defense Grant Program. Motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is, I would like to move forward to ten A. We have some guests here for that. Ten A is approval of accepting the Sanger Meadows Edition Phase Three, located in Commissioner Precinct One into the county maintenance system.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Let's go to six A, approval of renewal of R I P two zero two six zero five voluntary benefits to Colonial Life and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B, approval to contract with G two General Contractors for the replacement of the broken access door panels of the Charlie J Cole Building. About fifty-two thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents through the Texas Inter Local Purchasing System Cooperative Contract, two one one zero zero one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is succeed, approval of purchase of Palo Alto Subscription Services from Presidio Holdings Incorporated, an approved reseller of Karasoff Technology Corporation in the amount of ninety-two thousand, eighty or twelve dollars and twenty cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources, D I R Cooperative Contract, D I R T S O four two eight eight. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approve renewal of Civic Plus Software and Services from Civic Plus L L C, an estimated amount of sixty thousand, one hundred forty dollars and, and eight cents through the T, Tips Cooperative Contract, two two zero one zero five. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of the renewal of Coheti, Coheti, Cohesity Software Subscription from Presidio Network Solutions Group, L L C, amount of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars and twelve cents through the Texas Inter Local Purchasing System Tips Cooperative Contract, two two zero one zero five.
Move approval.
Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of purchase of Cohesity Data Platform Support Maintenance Subscription from Presidio Network Solutions Group, L L C, through the Texas Department of Information Resources, D I R Cooperative Contract, D I R T S O four two five nine, amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval of contract with Climatic, I mean Climatech, L L C, for graphics upgrade of the emergency management system in the amount of fifty-two thousand, fifty-six dollars through buyboard cooperative contract, seven three three dash two four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval renewal of Newtonix Cloud Infrastructure Software Subscription from Freeit Data Solutions Incorporated, an approved reseller of Karasoff Technology Corporation, amount of seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred two dollars and nineteen cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources, D I R Cooperative Contract. What's that? Ninety-one cents. Let me restate the dollar amount. An amount of seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred two dollars and ninety-one cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources, D I R Cooperative Contract, D I R C P O four 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 four. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is six I, approval of the renewal of the Falcon Complete Endpoint Protection Bundle from Apollo Information Systems, in amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and thirteen cents through the Texas Department of Information Resources, D I R Cooperative Contract, D I R C P O four eight six eight. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six J, approval of purchase and addition of twelve police packaged vehicles to the current county fleet, amount of six hundred seven thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents using permanent improvement funds through the City of Denton Cooperative Contract, eight four five five. As recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee and any appropriate action.
Yeah, sure. I'll be happy to, uh, talk about this before we vote on it. So, um, obviously with COVID and, and the way the vehicles, uh, have not been available over the last couple of years, we, we've been behind, obviously, in, in being able to supply, uh, vehicles to the county. And so, um, fortunately with, with purchasing, I want to help, I want to say how much I appreciate purchasing and, and specifically TK. Uh, under this circumstance, we, uh, found, uh, twelve vehicles that were available immediately here locally, uh, in the Dallas-Forth area. And we're able to secure those, obviously, if we approve this, which will help catch us up to where we should be. And, um, we now have the vehicles that will be coming in in about eight months will actually be what we ordered for this year that we still don't have. So this is, uh, an exciting day for us, quite frankly, to be able to catch up a little bit with our law enforcement vehicles. Uh, and I, again, I want to, I can't tell you how much I appreciate purchasing, uh, and their attitude in getting this handled quickly. Because this came about on Thursday or Friday and to get it, or no, Wednesday of last week, to get it put on this, the, the, for us to purchase now so we don't lose these vehicles was, was an exceptional work, and I really appreciate it. I know there's a lot going on, but this is huge for our employees, the safety, and for our citizens. So, um, I really appreciate, uh, the, uh, support. Yeah.
You moving approval?
Yeah, I moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
Thank you, guys.
Carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Next is six K, approval of evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Arca Texas as the most qualified architecture firm for the district courtroom at the Morse Street Facility under Project R F P Q two three two seven four five Architectural Services miscellaneous facility projects.
I'd like to move approval, but I have a comment, too.
Was there a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell? Any discussion? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, this is, would it actually be our temporary courtroom? As we are, um, continuing the, the work on the expansion plans for our courts building. And I want to make sure that we're aware that this is done in two phases, this architectural, uh, contract, so that we will see the feasibility and the pri-, the price estimate from them before they move to.
This is not a guarantee this is happening.
That's right. So we, we will see that and make a decision before anything else happens.
Perfect, good. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Thank you for your efforts on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, approval of budgetman request one zero zero two three zero for Public Health to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five I D C U S U R grant, in amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request one zero zero two four zero for Public Health to roll over unspent fiscal year twenty twenty-four Infectious Disease Control Unit, the I D C U COVID-nineteen Epi Grant, funds amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and increase revenues and allocate expenditures and additional funding received in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars to various line items for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Infectious Disease Control Unit, Epi twenty, COVID at nineteen, Epi Grant, for a total transfer of five hundred, four hundred four thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval budgetman request one zero zero two nine zero for Public Health to roll over all unallocated funds from the city's readiness grant, the C R I grant, from fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, thirty-one dollars and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of budgetman request one zero zero three zero zero for the death investigation to transfer seven hundred seventy thousand, two hundred forty dollars from non-departmental unappropriate contingency to contract services to cover the increased cost of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Tarrant County Medical Examiner District Agreement and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Um, that seems like a pretty big amount that has gone up. Didn't the current, uh, death examiner in Tarrant County just retire recently? Is this increase perhaps due to the new person coming in?
Well, this is, the, the, to answer your question, this, this has not the first year that we've had a significant increase of this nature. This is, and so we're, um, I would tell you, we're going to be looking to see if this is still the, the very best option for us, you know? And so we, we do believe in contracting fairly with our, um, with our partners. We appreciate Tarrant County and the great relationship we've had. And so, uh, but the, there has been quite an increase there. So we're going to, we are going to be looking closely to see if this is, uh, if this is still the, the very, the best arrangement for us. For, at this time, it definitely is.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, ma'am. We have a motion, a second. All in favor? Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Where was I? Okay.
Seventy.
Seventy. Approval of budgetman request one zero zero three one zero for Public Health to roll over all unallocated funds from the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant from fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budgetman request one zero zero three two zero for the Criminal District Attorney Treasury purchases to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from technology equipment to dues and subscriptions, the funds we use to pay for the subscription for the transit union search database and any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval budgetman request one zero zero three three zero for the county jail to transfer six hundred seventy thousand from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and human resources overtime policy as recommended by the budget office, for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards due to a shortage of detention officers.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resource Regarding Hiring Actions of Elected Officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one demotion in the two hundred eleventh District Court, one new hire in the county auditor's office, one lateral transfer in console precinct six, one promotion in the county clerk, two new hires and one promotion in adult probation, one promotion in the district attorney's office, one new hire in the district clerk, one promotion in the district clerk, one new hire in Justice of the Peace, precinct one, one new hire in juvenile probation, one promotion in juvenile probation, six new hires in the sheriff's office, five of those are detention officer one, two promotion in the sheriff's office, one rehire in the sheriff's office, one new hire in the tax office, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect, thank you. That is, again, presented for recording purposes only. Next is nine A, approval of a memorandum of understanding between Denton County Wick and the Anne Wendell School for Young Children Head Start Program and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten B, approval of Legacy Ranch Phase Three Final Plot, this is lots twenty-five through thirty-six, Block A. This is thirty point one eight acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four.
On of approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the auto report of the Denton County Sheriff's Office, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, Chapter fifty-nine asset forfeiture report as required by Article fifty-nine of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approval of Denton County Sheriff's Office fiscal year twenty twenty-four equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for the U S Department of Justice.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B, approval of acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Office of the Governor Grant Specialty Court Program Grant, the Adult Drug Court, amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars, nineteen cents and the distribution of grant funds to the appropriate Denton County Budget Line Item and any appropriate actions to the two hundred eleventh and four hundred sixty-second District Court Drug Treatment Courts.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen C, approval completion of continuing education hours by Commissioner Bobby J. Mitchell for the calendar year twenty twenty-four as required by section eight one point zero zero two five of the Texas Local Government Code. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. I don't know about this.
But is it true?
Is it fair to all concern?
Checking.
Little Bill Goodwill. Okay, we have a motion, a second, enough teasing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. She could, she could probably teach those classes.
Yeah, if you ever added up all your continuing education hours.
It's a lot. Next is fourteen B, approval to submit an electronic, an annual electronic report form in compliance with Senate Bill eighteen twelve, demonstrate Denton County Texas authorization to exercise the power of eminent domain in Texas and appropriate action. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Savins Maintenance Grant Contract between the Office of Attorney General in Denton County, Texas for certain grant funds for the OAG statewide automated victim notification service of Savins and approval of the participating entity services agreement for the statewide automated victim notification service, the APRES Safety Vine Service Agreement for annual maintenance of the Savins system and approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Savins Maintenance Plan in any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of number one, a commercial contract approved property and addendum to commercial contract approved property between Texas Health Resources, Texas nonprofit corporation, a seller, and Denton County, Texas, as buyer for the purchase of real property located at thirty-three oh five Corinth Parkway, Corinth, Texas, seven five two zero eight and further described as Lot One, Block A, Corinth Medical Center, an addition of the City of Corinth, Denton County, Texas. The property for the purchase, price of nine million, five hundred thousand dollars plus all applicable closing costs, including title insurance policy and boundary survey through state commission paid by the seller to Newland Real Estate Incorporated. And two, grant authorization to proceed with closing and approval for the county judge to sign all necessary closing documents. And three, grant authorization for the Denton County Auditor and Denton County Treasurer is applicable to pay earnest money in amount of one hundred thousand dollars and a five thousand dollar due diligence inspection fee to a public title at twenty-six twenty-six Howell Street, Dallas, Texas, seven five two oh four, within fourteen days of effective date of the contract. And number four, with funding to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Move approval.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen E, approval of the contract for engineering services supplemental agreement number four between Denton County, Texas and Half Associates Incorporated to increase the scope of the project, to include preparation of plans, specifications and estimates. This is the PSNE construction phase services for the Shady Shores Road Project from the W. Swisher Road to Silk Tree Court, from Parkside Lane to north of Dobbs Road and from south of West Shady Shores Road to West Shady Shores Road in amount of one million, six hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars for a total revised contract amount of five million, nine hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars with funding to come from the Shady Shores Road Precinct two, trip twenty-two, auto line item seven four 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 nine zero three zero and any appropriate action. This is in Commissioner Precinct two and precinct three.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say ayes.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks.
Next is fourteen F, approval of the district office lease contract between Denton County, Texas and the Committee on House Administration for the House of Representatives of the State of Texas for the benefit of Honorable Jared Patterson, a member of the House of Representatives of the State of Texas. This lease is for office space at Denton County Frisco Government Center located at fifty-five thirty-three FM four twenty-three Frisco, Texas at seven five zero three four. The space to be leased is rooms five oh two and five oh three, both to be shared with precinct one and precinct two. County Commissioners, rooms five oh nine and five ten, state representative's space, totaling four hundred fifty square feet. Rent will be three hundred fifty per month and the lease begins January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and ends January twelfth, twenty twenty-seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G, approval of combined product subscription agreement with SOE Software Corporation, an exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of election night reporting voter education poll worker training with year one, two and three costs amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars for each year for a total three-year cost of one hundred sixty thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars to come from auto line item zero one six 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 one one zero seven five as recommended by Frank Phillips, Elections Administrator and Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer with the Chair. Move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item seventeen, which is community updates. This is updates from Commissioners Court Members. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct one.
Thank you, Judge. I want to congratulate Salona Police Officer John Christian. Officer Christian recently graduated from the prestigious Texas DPS Fitness Institute. This is a six-week program which equips the participants with in-depth knowledge and leadership in health, wellness and safety, which obviously he'll bring to the Salona PD. And then I want to congratulate the town of Prosper today. Lakewood Park celebrates its grand opening. This park offers close to twenty-three acres of amenities such as soccer fields, yes, pickleball courts, basketball courts, an expanded playground and more for the citizens and visitors of Prosper. So go out and enjoy yourself, just us older people don't get hurt. Thank you, Judge.
You right?
That's right.
Tony, the Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. I just got a couple of things here. In Carrollton, there's the Wellness and Nature Walks. So a little orthopedic help there. That's at the Carrollton Senior Center on the twentieth from ten to eleven AM. And then Sounds on the Square in downtown Carrollton, that is the twenty-second, five to seven PM. And then in Little Elm, the Farmer's Market at the lawn, that's on the twenty-third, ten to two, and that's at the lawn.
Perfect, good, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell.
I have Holland Village, uh, Village Glows on this Saturday at five thirty PM to nine PM at the shops in Holland Village. Also have American Red Cross Blood Drive, November the twenty-ninth, twelve to five PM in Holland Village. In Louisville, we have a neighborhood grant program, of course, that's today, six thirty to seven thirty. So run out and take advantage of it. On November the twenty-second, on Friday, Light Cycles, Glow in the Dark Bike Ride in Louisville from seven to nine PM. Also in Louisville, we have the Christmas tree lighting and parade on the seventh. The Houghines Christmas Parade at one PM in Louisville.
Thank you. Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, we have something unusual. Instead of a run, we have a cookie crawl, which is going to take place in Argyle, sponsored by the Alliance Club.
I can do that.
I think I could do a cookie crawl as well. Cookies will be available at Argyle businesses. You have to purchase a ticket, which are fifteen dollars, and you can purchase the day of the event, which is the twenty-third. Only one hundred and fifty tickets will be sold. Then they also are having their Thanksgiving Farmer's Market and Holiday Artisan Fair on the twenty-third from nine to one, and that's at the Argyle Party and Gift Back Lot. Southlake has Home for the Holidays Christmas Time in Southlake on the twenty-third from four thirty to eight thirty. Says to kick off the season of festivities with carriage rides, photos with Santa, snow tubing and more. And speaking of Santa, if you're in Trophy Club, you have a letters to Santa from the twenty-fifth of November to the seventeenth of December. You have to have time for Santa to make all his things. That's why they cut it off on the seventeenth of December. They have a North Pole mailbox at their town hall and they suggest you drop off your letter to Santa with a return address so you can hear back from him. And then on the thirtieth, they're going to do gingerbread house decorating at their fire station. It's gonna, registration is open for that now. It's twenty dollars to for participant. It's from nine to ten thirty and then again noon to one thirty. I used to do gingerbread house decorating with my grandkids and I forgot to charge them twenty dollars apiece. But it's a fun, fun, fun thing to do. Lots of fun stuff going on.
Perfect, good, thank you. I'd like to give a big Denton County shout-out to Flowermount High School Robotics Team. They represent the United States at the twenty twenty-four Global Challenge at Athens, Greece. And the, the team was one of a hundred ninety-three countries participating in the competition. They received several awards. Awesome Flowermount High School, including two third-place recognitions for engineering and skills challenge. So congratulations to our kiddos over at Flowermount High School. I want to remind everybody that our, we've got Thanksgiving next week and our Denton County offices will be closed on Thanksgiving Day, the twenty-eighth, and Friday, the twenty-ninth. We'll have no Commissioners Court next week. I would like to go to executive session. Let's go to fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, closed meeting deliberate to purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property to deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body negotiated with a third person. Fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A, consternation to attorney in a closed meeting when the governmental body seeks the advice of attorney about pending litigation, cause number four, two four CB zero one zero zero three, styled Egan McBride versus Denton County Adal, currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division. And fifteen C, Texas Government Code, personal matters affecting governmental body that closed me deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discontinue dismissal of a member and advisor by the Denton County Civil Service Commission, any appropriate action. All right, and it is ten thirty-eight, we're in executive session.